Call this work session to order. We'll call this work session to order. The agenda this night involves the Pierce Island wastewater treatment plant and some of the issues around it. One ground rule just to set up to make sure expectations are in line is that the focus of this evening is educational, both for the folks around this table as well as those watching at home and those in the audience this evening. So there will not be specific audience Q and A in this evening, but there certainly will be an opportunity in the not-so-distant future to have public input likely at a city council meeting. That's a likely environment for that. But for this evening, there's a lot of education to be had, and that is the primary purpose of that this evening. So with that, I want to turn this over to our city manager, John Bohangel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I've asked the staff to put together a presentation that will provide both the council and the public an update on our wastewater system, focusing on the Pierce Island wastewater treatment plant. As you are aware, the EPA issued a draft permit last year that included the 301H waiver that allows primary treatment at the Pierce Island wastewater treatment plant. Purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with some of the background information on this important issue. That information will include some of the historical overview of our treatment plant and system, the regulatory structure that we are working within, as well as some of the science, financial, and practical issues that must be considered as we move forward. With that, I'd like to take this opportunity to turn this over to David Allen, the Deputy Director of Public Works for Water and Sewer.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. That's the first time in my career here that I've had to say "Mr. Mayor."
(laughter)
Thank you, and I'd like to introduce some of the people that we have here. Peter Rice is going to be providing some of the presentation. Also with us tonight is Frank Underwood with Underwood Engineers, provided a large degree of our consulting engineering on our wastewater system, along with Steve Clifton, also an engineer for Underwood. And we have Dr. Alan Michael, who is a PhD and an environmental scientist who specializes in ocean discharges with 30 years of experience in that field, and in particular, he has eight years of experience as the technical advisor for the EPA on their ocean outfalls. So Dr. Michael was instrumental in working with us, doing a study on our treatment plant and the river. And I think further on in the presentation, Peter Rice will be going into some of the information that he was able to come up with. So what I'd like to do is just go over -- we're going to have a little introduction where I'm going to talk a little bit about this -- what this EPA permit is that we're talking about, 301H. We throw these things around. I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what we're talking about there. I'm going to talk a little bit about our system overview. I think it's important to understand that the wastewater treatment plant does not function by itself. We have a collection and a pumping system, and all of those issues associated with that system are what need to be considered when we're talking about our treatment plant. In addition, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history. I think it's also important that we understand why we are where we are today, and some of that history, I think, sheds light as to how we got to this point. And then Peter's going to go into some of the information regarding the permitting and regulatory issues, some of the technical information on the studies that we performed that provide the basis of our decision-making and what will be your decision-making process going forward from here, and talk a little bit about our infrastructure plan. I know some of you have sat through Capitol meetings and some other presentations, but I think it's important that everyone's up to date as to where we stand on our infrastructure plan. And then I'll talk a little bit about some of the issues associated with secondary treatment, as that seems to be a common theme, and we'll summarize. And then I think there will be some chance for the councilors to ask some of the staff some questions. Am I not correct?
I want to take one moment for the folks at home as well as those here this evening, that in addition to the council, we also have several members of the city's delegation at the state legislature. I think there are four here. I see Jackie Calley Pitts, Representative Pitts. I see Representative Powers, I believe, Representative Norelli, and of course, Representative Panalakos here as a councillor as well this evening. I want to recognize their appearance here and really very much appreciate it.
Thank you. So to begin with, the NPDES permit, what we call the NIPD's permit, is essentially the discharge permit that is outlined or defined through the Clean Water Act and the rules of the Environmental Protection Agency. And what this is, is it's a document that says, tells us exactly what we can discharge from our treatment plant, what the limits are, what the flow limits are. And actually, that then becomes our foundation from what we base our -- all of our operations on. The important thing to know is that the current permit that we have is a 301H waiver from secondary permit. The standard permit is secondary treatment. The 301H that you hear us talking about is a waiver that allows us to go to primary Essentially, our wastewater plan is based on water quality. Again, that's what the discharge permit requires we look at, and that's what our plan is based on looking at. It's been extremely detailed study. We have a number of studies. Peter's going to go into some of those that provide the information that we based our infrastructure plan on. And we worked very closely with the DES, which is the Department of Environmental Services, and the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, in developing those plans and facilitating Essentially, what we use is we use science. We do these studies, and we like to base our decisions on science, obviously the economics. None of these projects are cheap. I mean, you've seen some of the projects that we've done, the sewer separations. They're heavy construction projects, so we have to keep our eye on the economics. We are in the process of finishing a rate model study for both the water and sewer system, and I think in another month or so, we'll be presenting that to the council. So we try to use those types of tools in making our decisions. And then on regulatory policy, essentially, the EPA rules that they promulgate and the state laws -- or federal laws. And again, what we try to focus on are those water quality issues, and essentially, the ones that are the most -- we're trying to get the most bang for our buck. What does the most good to the environment and at the best cost as we move forward on this plan? So our system overview, and we're going to be talking a lot about pipes and plants and things like that. And as we were preparing this, I realized that one of the things that I don't have any of the slides of in this is really our staff. And I think what's important to note is that one of the crucial elements of our system is the staff that we have. We have with us tonight Paula Ananee as our chief plant operator. She was actually just recognized and will be awarded Plan Operator of the Year for the State of New Hampshire by the New England Environment -- New England Water Environment Federation later this month. So she was voted Plant Operator of the Year. Obviously, a high honor, the highest honor that you can get as a plant operator in the State of New Hampshire. In addition to Paul, I think most of you remember, we had a presentation a year or so ago. We had our Assistant Chief Plant Operator was part of a team of seacoast operators who went onto a national competition, and they won the competition. So that was our Assistant Chief Plant Operator, Jeff Howe. And then the city just -- the Pierce Island Treatment Plant actually was just awarded second runner-up for Plan of the Year in the State of New Hampshire by the New Hampshire Water Environment Association. So, you know, I think it's important to note that we have a highly professional staff that runs this system that we're going to be talking about. And, you know, I think they deserve their kudos for what they've been able to do over the last few years on improving our system. This first slide actually shows part of our mapping system that we have. All of our -- the green lines indicate our sewer collection lines. This is a part of our GIS system. We've done mapping over the last five or six years to put that information into a computerized database that allows us to collect, store information, whether it's from TV or videos on DVD, that we actually check the integrity of the lines, do repairs. All of that information, we're starting to collect in a digital format, and this allows us -- this type of map is kind of the backbone that allows us to store that information and find it easily. Our system consists of two wastewater treatment plants. We have the Pierce Island plant over on Pierce Island. And then we also operate the P's wastewater treatment plant. That's the one that you can see off of this balding turnpike. 115 miles of sewer pipe, 20 pump stations. Essentially, the pipes flow gravity to these low points, and then a pump station will actually pick that flow up and move it to the next high point where it then flows gravity again. So that -- those pump stations help push that flow to the treatment plants. And probably the most important point on this slide is the fact that 50% of those sewers -- sewer lines are what are called combined sewers. What that means is they carry not only sanitary sewer, that that you flush down the toilet or down sinks or out of showers, but they also pick up stormwater that may fall in the rain, go into a catch basin, and go into the system. It's a very significant issue, and you're going to see that that's been a focus of what our wastewater plan is dealing with. There are two facilities. We have the P's Treatment Facility. That is a current -- a secondary treatment plant, 1.2 million gallons per day, completed in 1996, and it functions very well, a very efficient, good treatment plant. We have our Pierce Island Treatment Plant, 4.8 million gallons per day. It is a advanced primary treatment, and we're going to go into a little more detail about that plant further in the presentation. This is just going to be a little overview of that combined system that I talked about. In a new, modern -- if we were building new infrastructure, which is what we are doing in some of these old sections, you would put two pipes in the ground. This white one would be a stormwater pipe, and the yellow one would be a sanitary sewer pipe. When you have a combined system, you really only have that one pipe, the yellow pipe there. And you can see this little grate and the pipe running down tying into that represents what would be a catch basin out in the street. So every time it rains, all that rainwater is going to go into that same pipe that your sanitary waste goes into. The pipe is probably plenty large for your daily flows that come from houses, from their domestic waste, from sinks, toilets, showers. What happens is when you have a wet event, when you have a rain event, the water goes in there. All of a sudden, your capacity is taken up, and the system starts to fill up, and it will start to back up. I think most of you have been around in the 90s, late 90s, when we had a couple of those very significant rainstorms, almost biblical in quantity, where we had severe street flooding. We had severe backups. And this is what would happen in the case with the combined system. Essentially, the system fills up, and it seeks a place to discharge, and it ends up getting into basements. It gets into, you know, comes out of manholes in the street, and that is the combined system Where that would relieve itself is in a place like the South Mill Pond. We have what are called combined sewer overflows, CSOs. We have two overflows into the South Mill Pond and one under in the Deer Street area, near the Deer Street Pump Station, in the area of the salt pile. And what these provide, these are the relief valves that, you know, normally, nothing's going through them, but in a significant rainstorm, as those pipes fill up, the intent is to keep that flow from going into the basement, so it discharges into this mill pond. Now, I think most of you too have been around long enough to know that six or seven years ago, when that tide went out and that pond was empty and the sun beat down on it, you almost couldn't walk past that pond. The odors were extremely strong. You know, the work that we've done thus far, just in the past six or seven years, and we're chipping away at the tip of the iceberg on this issue, and we've already made significant impact that has been documented on the water quality in that pond by doing some of these sewer separation projects that we've done. And it's not perfect. We still do get overflows in there, and it's -- we have a ways to go, but we are starting to see the benefits of the work that we've been doing. And this is what we're shooting for. This is what those sewer separation projects are. You'll often see, instead of that one pipe there, we put in a separate pipe, and usually, in this case, this is a brand-new drain pipe in there. And as you get all of these external flows, you no longer have a connection into the sewer system, so you don't have backups. You do things like take roof leaders and put those out onto the ground and get as many of these extraneous flows out of the sewer system that rob you of capacity and create backups and overflows. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of our system. This is actually a picture from the turn of the century of Pierce Island, and this area right here is about where the treatment plant is right now. You can see these are the navigational lights that are -- still exist there, but that's what the Pierce Island looked like around the turn of the century. And this is a quote that I think some of you have seen before, but it kind of brings to light what we're dealing with and the order of magnitude of this problem. And I found this in a yearly report, and it's written by the mayor at the time, and it says, "The condition of the mill ponds at the north and south ends of the city has become the subject of much public discussion and anxiety. This is a source of great annoyance to the people of the city, and it causes great apprehension of danger to the public health. I am not prepared to decide what is the best remedy of this great evil, but I earnestly recommend your subject -- the subject to your attention." And that was written in 1875 by Mayor Moses H. Goodrich. I feel that probably in the last six or seven years, we have probably done more than the previous 125 years that it took to get to this point, so. The history of the treatment plant, in 1964, our wastewater treatment plant was built. In 1977, they did a 201 Facilities Plan, and I think you've heard us talk about our 201 Facilities Plan. This was the first one that was done. It is essentially, you know, when we say 201 Facilities Plan, just think of it as sewer system master plan. That's what the 201 Facilities Plan is. Right. I'm not sure if it's sectioned. Is that the section? Okay. The -- so that's a defined document that we do. That plan recommended separation of parts of the systems, and through the '80s, there were portions of the system that were separated. Well, discharges to the river, there were actually -- some of those were CSOs. Some of them were actually just live untreated sanitary waste going into the river. The plan recommended eliminating those, and the plan also recommended going to secondary treatment. So in 1980, the city actually had a secondary treatment plant designed. Excuse me. In 1982, the state actually was in a situation where there were a number of treatment plants that needed upgrading, and given where we are on this river, it was clear to them that there was this 301H waiver portion of the Clean Water Act that would allow certain communities with the appropriate conditions for an ocean discharge to stay with a primary treatment plant. So the state, knowing that a primary treatment plant is significantly less expensive than a secondary treatment plant, said, "We'll save some money and use the money that would have been earmarked for a Portsmouth secondary treatment plant and take care of some of the greater problems in other parts of the state." So the state actually went forward and prepared the 301H waiver and submitted it jointly with the city to the EPA, and in 1985, our permit was issued with that 301H waiver. In 1987, there was legislation that allowed for 95% funding for treatment plant upgrades. In 1990, a consent decree was entered with the EPA, and we began upgrading our treatment plant to a advanced primary treatment plant, and we also began CSO studies. 1992, we completed the upgrades to the treatment plant, and we then submitted a reapplication for our permit, which included a 301H waiver for primary. Then in 1998, the EPA, in discussions with the EPA, we were required to update our CSO, the combined sewer overflow study. And so at that time, we created what's referred to as the LTCP, which is our Long-Term Control Plan. Again, this is a mini-master plan that looks at our collection system and those overflows that we have into the South Mill Pond and at Deer Street. That plan is still what we are following today, although we have not received official approval on that, but we've gone forward, and we've been -- those projects we're doing are projects that are identified in that Long-Term Control Plan. Between 1998 and 2005, as our permit had lapsed, the EPA wanted information from us to supplement the information they had on our discharge application, our permit application. So for those few years, we were doing additional studies. We did our outfall study that Peter's going to talk about. We were doing a lot of studies on our treatment plan, its operational efficiencies. And then in 2005, the EPA actually issued our draft discharge permit that included the 301H waiver. In May, there was a public hearing on that draft. In September, the city provided public meetings so that we could provide more information to the residents on our sewer -- overall sewer project. So as we went forward with this permit application, we also were dealing very closely with the state DES. And this is a copy of a letter that we received in May of 2004, and essentially, what the state was saying was, they concurred with the science that we had brought forward, that, you know, they determined the surface water quality standards, their review of the 303D list, which looks at impaired waters, and they reviewed the 301H monitoring program that Dr. Alan Michael had prepared, and concurred with us and agreed that a 301H waiver is appropriate at this location. Their analysis said that the Scatico River is not meeting water quality standards. However, review of the issues associated with that not meeting water quality standards were not at all associated with the Pierce Island wastewater treatment plant. Peter's going to talk a little bit about what the impaired areas are on the river, and but the bottom line was, none of those impairments were as a result of a Pierce Island discharge. So in summary, you know, we have a water quality program that's actually changed over time. We've done a number of these studies, and we're always focusing on what the best solution, the best use of our money, and the best course of action for the environment as we go forward. We've eliminated 11 out of 14 of the combined sewer discharges. We're down to those last three, and those discharges are all monitored. We have devices on them. We know how much flow is coming out of those. All that information is brought back to a computer. We have rain gauges in a couple of spots in the city, so we actually use that data to both report to the EPA and the DES to let them know just how much is actually going into that mill pond during storm events, and also for us to do analysis on that. I mean, what we're seeing is that it's taking more and more rain to actually trigger those, so we're seeing a positive benefit from the work that we're doing. We've seen the collection system upgrades have had a direct benefit as far as minimizing flooding and street flooding. I mean, I think we've had the wettest year on record, and we've had very few incidents of road flooding, of basement backups. I think we had -- we looked at our records. We keep track of when we get call-ins. We've only had three call-ins this year for flooded basements. It was off the charts eight years ago. I mean, when we had that, you know, there were too numerous to count was pretty much the issue when we had those 98 storms. And actually, our work at our Pierce Island Treatment has got that plant running so that it is currently exceeding any of the treatment requirements that it has right now. I'm going to turn this over to Peter, and he's going to talk a little bit about the permit requirements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Peter Rice. I'm the city engineer for the Water and Sewer Division. What you're looking at here is a view from the Pierce Island Treatment Plant out into the river. That's the old naval prison. This is called Henderson Point, and the approximate location of our outfall is right in front of the ship right out here. And it's important to note that this discharge location is about 75 feet deep during low tide. It's really some of the fastest currents in the world, and in terms of assimilative capacity of a water body, this is probably one of the best locations for a 301H waiver. Our permit is issued by the EPA with concurrence from the Department of Environmental Services. As Dave said, we have a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. This permit, or NIPD's permit, issues what we can discharge from this treatment plant, what's allowed out of the treatment plant. It's renewed every five years, and its limits vary depending upon the receiving water. It's important to note that varying levels of size of water body allows for more waste to come out, and that's why a 301H waiver is acceptable in this location versus a community like Newmarket, which has a very small flow. They need advanced treatment because the water body isn't big enough to assimilate whatever's being discharged into that water body. The Congress acknowledged this assimilative capacity of marine discharges back in 1997 when they created the 301H waiver. As Dave said, in 1985, we received a waiver from secondary treatment, and that's the current permit that we're working under now. Our permit limits are 30% removal for organic material. That's some of the solids and things that dissolve in the water, and 30% for solid material that flow through plastics and things like that. Currently, our plant averages 55% and 75%. We far exceed the requirements of the current permit, and that's really due to the effort of our operators and really the diligence of trying to keep that moving forward. This is a picture of our permit, and what this shows you is that there are different things out here, and they're all technical terms and things, but what it is, it's the pollutants that we're responsible to monitor, and it's the frequency we're responsible to monitor these pollutants. We continuously monitor our treatment plant. We know daily the bacteria limits coming out of the plant. We know the chemical dosages being added, and we know that the water quality going into that river is good. In addition to our monitoring, the state does monitoring in the river, and as Dave talked to you a little bit about, they generate this thing called a 303D list. And what this is, it's really a process. When something -- when a water body's not meeting water quality, they get placed on this list, and what it does, it identifies the pollutants of concern. What is it that's causing the water body not to meet water quality? In this case, it's mercury, PCB, dioxin, and enterococidal bacteria. It also lists the source of these things, and Pierce Island is not cited as the source. The state reports cite leaking sewer pipes. They cite CSOs, failed septic systems, stormwater runoff. These are the pollutants and sources that we focused our efforts on, and working with the EPA, we've really created a program that David talked or alluded to that's targeted to address these problems, these known sources of pollution, versus what the state acknowledges is not a source of pollution at this point, the Pierce Island Treatment Plant. Our programs are based on science. This is a picture of our P's lab. This is where a lot of our monitoring, testing is done, and as you can see, it's a modern laboratory, and we continually monitor and test our wastewater. In addition to our monitoring, there's been a number of studies done. As Dave alluded to, the 201 Facilities Plan, that's the 1999 201 Facilities Plan. It was an update to the original 1997 plan. That was a master plan looking at all of our infrastructure. The Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan was another master plan, but on a smaller scale, looked specifically at our collection system and how do we deal with the overflows that are causing problems in the river? To implement that Long-Term Control Plan, there was a preliminary design done for the entire targeted area of the city, and we'll show a little bit more about that later. We also did an organics removal pilot study. What that was is how could we optimize our treatment plant? How could we get that 55% removal versus the 30%? So we did the study. So we did the study. We did upgrades to implement the conclusion of that study and we seen positive results. We also looked at the Pierce Island outfall and how could we potentially improve the outfall to improve the similar capacity of the river. We did extensive research. We looked at the velocities of the current. We looked at the bathometric survey, which is actually like a survey underwater of the river. And we determined the best location and the best configuration for an outfall. Currently, that outfall is part of the draft permit that we have pending with the EPA. So if that permit goes through, we will be doing an outfall upgrade at the treatment plant to improve the dilution from that plant. We also do annual river monitoring. So we're continually, every year we go out and we do monitoring. And also, as Dave mentioned, we had a river monitoring study done by Dr. Alan Michael, who's here with us this evening. The work that Dr. Michael did showed that there was no discernible impact as a result of this treatment plant. And what that means is, we took samples right over the outfall and compared those to samples in background areas and you couldn't see a difference. So there was really, you know, it showed you that the impact to the river wasn't seen from this treatment plant. This is a figure showing the area which we did sampling. The small Xs, which are a little bit difficult to see, show the areas. But this, up in the far left-hand corner, is up above the Sarah Long Bridge. We did water quality sampling up here. We went out to Pepperell Cove. We went down to Little Harbor. And then we did a bunch around the plant itself. We also did sediment sampling, what they call benthic sampling. And what that does, it looks at the organisms that live in the sediments and determine if those organisms are stressed and how viable they are. And the areas that we looked at really were around the treatment plant and the areas where there are slow velocities where sediment drops out. We couldn't do all the same spots because of such high velocity in the river, sediment just doesn't drop out in those areas. And the conclusion of the study really was that there was no discernible impact and the EPA concurred with that. Their head water quality man down in Boston came out with a statement and said, you know, I'm usually the bearer of bad news, but I can't, you know, I can't find fault with your study. In addition to these studies, we did actual video work on 55,000 feet of sewer pipe. In addition, we cleaned 68,000 feet of sewer. What this is, it's a picture of a section of sewer pipe. It's an example of what we saw in a lot of our systems. This is a 100-year-old pipe. Typically, you design pipes for 100 years and this pipe is really probably at the life expectancy that we expect. We used that information to supplement the studies, to target our efforts and to really decide how we were going to best utilize our money to get the best bang for our dollar. Some of our ongoing projects, this is an example of recently completed project. It was, you can see the tennis courts down in this area down here. It's along the South Mill Pond. And it was the first, what we call Contract One and we have a number of contracts following. All the projects are based on the 201 Plan, the Long Term Control Plan for the CSOs, sewer evaluations and the targeted sewer separation design. This is a list of the projects we completed since 1997. All of these projects go to improving water quality, whether it's eliminating raw discharges of sewer, sewage into the rivers, or whether it's improving capacity or efficiency of treatment. The Thaxter Falls and Sheffield area actually eliminated swamps or wetlands that were being drained into our sewer, taking up capacity. We removed over a million gallons per day as a result of that, of those fixes. The Bracket Road Sewer eliminated sewage discharge into the water right next to the Little Harbor School where children play. There are, the Upper Court Street was a great example of our utilizing multiple sources of funding, leveraging DOT money when possible. You can see that the historic streetscape that was created as a result of that. But we also got new stormwater, new drains, new water. And we were able to leverage, maximize the grant available as a result of that. So these are all projects that have had significant improvements to our operation of our system and go to what David said is reduction in the number of overflows and backups. This is a picture of the Lincoln area, which we were able to leverage and get streetscape improvements, new sidewalks, curb, roadway. And this actually was done before the final paving was done so that this is now nice, clean pavement through here. In addition to the sewers that we're responsible for dealing with, we also have to deal with the stormwater. Regulatory requirements for stormwater are becoming more and more stringent. And what you don't see here is a treatment system that's underground. What we do is, we treat the stormwater before it goes out into the South Mill Pond and thereby improve the water quality by reducing pollution load from that. And the trucks come onto that little pad and clean out the system. Some of our future projects, again, they're based on the studies that we've done and the reports that we've done. Probably the most exciting one coming up is the Deer Street Pumping Station upgrade, which as part of our Long Term Control Plan, we're required to maximize the amount of wastewater we get to the treatment plant. So we have to upgrade this pumping station to gain capacity. Well, if we're going to be doing an upgrade to the pumping station, we want it to try to get some aesthetic improvements out of as well. So we were able to address, which is the historic entrance to our city, we're going to have a much nicer view versus, you know, this old brick box. We're going to have something that's more aesthetically pleasing, more in keeping with the historic nature of the area. In addition to the Deer Street Pumping Station, this is an overview map of our city. The city hall's right up here. The South Mill Pond's right here. This purple area right here is our next contract that's currently out to bid for construction. We'll start construction in the spring. And it's the Elwin area, there's a little bit of Lincoln as well. And we're going to be doing water, sewer, drain, streetscape, sidewalk, curbing. So we're going to be doing a lot of improvements in that area as well. The area over here to the left is the Islington Bartlett Street area. That area is currently under design. In addition to those two areas, we're currently under design for this long piece down here. That's called the Borthwick Avenue Sewer, which goes through a bunch of swamps and wetlands and it's draining those into the sewer, taking up capacity. We're also designing the area, the lower Court Street portion. And we're going to be doing similar to what we did on the Upper Court Street as well. So these are a number of projects that are moving forward and will be under construction this summer. So it's going to be a lot of very interesting stuff and it's very exciting to see the progress that we're making. At this point, I'd like to hand the podium back to Dave.
Here, Peter. Current permit status. EPA, as I had mentioned, has issued a draft permit with a 301H waiver back in February. We have not heard back from them as to the status of that after the public hearing. So that is sitting. We're waiting to hear back from them. It is still going on in their review. As that is being reviewed though, as Peter mentioned, we're not standing still. We are continuing to do our projects. We're doing those Long Term Control Projects and we're going forward, dealing with the environmental issues that we see, that we know are having a positive impact on our city. Here's one that'll get your attention. This is the current typical three-bedroom home is paying now about $564 per year on their sewer bill. And that's just their sewer bill. That's not sewer and water, that's sewer. If we project out as we go forward on all of those projects that we have in our Long Term Control Plan, in year 12, we're probably looking at $1,100 plus per year sewer bill. And that's just based on the projects that we have in our capital plan and if we go forward with our Long Term Control Plan. So what does secondary do with all this? This is a view of our Pierce Island Treatment Plant as it stands right now. And if we were to just go forward and plop a secondary treatment plan in there, and I'm going to go into some of the issues associated with that, we're looking at a footprint that's going to look something like this for the treatment plant with digesters and secondary clarifiers and, you know, roads. But it's pretty much going to take up a good chunk of that island. And that brings us to some of the issues that we're going to have to deal with as we move forward to going to secondary. You can see here, you know, that's what the island looks like now. We've just completed a number of walkways in that recreational area. We've got parts of old historic Fort Washington in there. And to plop a secondary treatment plan on Pierce Island is obviously a significant issue. So what would we have to do to go to secondary? First thing we would propose is that we complete our Long Term Control Plan. Understand that the more of this rainwater we get out, the smaller our treatment plant can be. When you talk about pushing greater volumes of water, that means you're increasing your pump size. It means you're increasing your chemical usage. It means you're increasing the size of all of your facilities, your chemical pumps, motors, blowers. The whole shooting match just gets increasingly larger. And as you get larger and you have bigger swings in your flow, your equipment becomes much less efficient. We see that now at some of our pump stations, Mechanic Street, that has these big motors that are required to push big volumes of water over to our treatment plant. And they're typically running at the lower end of their design curve because our flows aren't that large. But they need to be that large to carry that combined flow. So we will have the exact same issues designing a secondary treatment plant with that current combined system. Secondly, to evaluate the secondary options, to go forward with this, there are so many issues associated with going to secondary right now that our first step would be to revisit the 201 Facilities Plan. Okay, let's take a look at where we're going. We have a secondary treatment plant at Pease. Are there options like taking some of our flow and directing it over to Pease, maybe expanding that pump station? Do we look at building another plant somewhere else? And, you know, by shedding some of that flow, then we could make a smaller treatment plant out at Pierce Island, a smaller secondary plant. All of these issues are very complex. They're not as, you know, everyone's seen what it takes to dig up a street and move a pipe and do that type of work. So any of these options are obviously going to have to be looked at for their timing, their impact on our rates, their feasibility and what's going to work best in the long run for the city. Obviously, that plant was built in 1964, the existing Pierce Island plant. The decisions we make going forward from here are 50- to 100-year decisions. So we just want to be sure that we're making the right decisions when we make those. And then securing funding to build this plant. You know, we do have that issue where we were more or less directed into a primary treatment plant, you know, 30 years ago. And there was funding, 95% funding. Now, right now, we're getting 30% funding on our projects. But, you know, that's not a guarantee that that money's going to be there. But, you know, there are STAG grants, state and tribal aid grants that we could look at. We would want to go to our congressional delegation and see what kind of support we can get for additional funding. But obviously, that's a major element in going forward on a secondary plant. The costs themselves, you know, current aid costs look like, and depending on what option we would end up with and where and at what time in the future it happens, it could be $35 to $50 million project to bring the city into secondary. In addition to those capital costs, the operations and maintenance costs are going to increase probably by a million and a million and a half dollars per year. Currently, for example, our Pierce Island Treatment Plant is a 4.5 million gallon a day plant. Our Pierce Island Secondary Plant is about 1/10th that amount is what we see on, say, an average daily flow. We use the exact same amount of electricity to run both those plants. So we have 10 times less flow at the Pease Plant and we're using the same amount of electricity as we do at the Pierce Island Plant. So operation and maintenance costs are a significant issue that we're going to have to keep track of. And what's the cost impact to ratepayers? Right now, as I had mentioned earlier, we're in the process of completing a new rate model. And, you know, those will have to be part of, part of the rate impact is going to have to be addressed as we go forward and we look at the different options and provide that information to you for your decision-making purposes. But we will have a rate model in effect that will help us in showing what those impacts are going to be. So the next step, what we'd like to propose is that with assistance from our outside consultant, our engineers and legal counsel, we'd like to prepare policy alternatives for presentation to the city council. It would require a meeting with the EPA. It would require putting together some of these options and some of the pros and cons. And then let the city council make a policy determination.
Your Honor, I would say that as part of this next step, what the staff would want to do is, over the next 30 to 60 days, is come up with some ideas as to some options that you may want us to proceed on. And those options would be detailed as to, after having discussions with our consultants and also with EPA. Because obviously, they're a partner with us in this whole project and we need to work with them. So we would like to have 30 to 60 days. We're still, again, waiting for the 301H waiver issue and decision to come down. But even prior to that, what we'd like to do is start looking at those so that you, as a council, would have some benchmarks for us to move forward on a policy decision. So there would be if-then statements and then we would move forward on those. And so that gives us more clear direction. Because once we do start down this road, we need to expend certain funds for those types of things that the Deputy Public Works Director talked about. Alternatives that we can look at, how our system, how we can do different things that he described within his presentation relative to size of plant, location of plant, flow, and the like. So if that is something that is acceptable to the council, we'd like to be able to do that.
And would it be in an ideal, excuse me, an ideal format in that, say, 30- to 60-day time period to come back to a format similar to this this evening?
Well, Your Honor. Well, Your Honor, I think what we would want to do is do that. But we, again, will have to fit it into the schedule because another item that I'd like to bring forward to the city council at your January 23 meeting, since we've changed the agenda process, is that at that time, do a 6:30 to 7:30 type meeting like this and bring you up to speed on our water treatment plant, the Madbury Water Treatment Plant, which was built in 1957. But I think it's going to be important for you to get a look at that infrastructure improvement as well. Now, that, what, be able to come back to you, we would suggest that we come back in this kind of venue and give you the similar type of information so that you would be able to talk about it. And then if it is before a regular council meeting, then we'd probably have it on agenda to give us some policy direction on where you want to go.
And it sounds like that the, maybe this is a question or comment and question. Comment would be, I'm assuming that the timing of when the waiver process would be completed does not affect the timing to conducting this next step of, say, this 30- to 60-day process. It's not a linear sort of thing.
No, we could go forward with that 30- to 60-day thing.
What I would say is that we, if the council says, yes, this sounds reasonable, we'll start pushing in that direction so that we have some viable options for you to proceed with.
I guess at this point, if this is the appropriate time to entertain some questions from the council, if we could go ahead and do that. Councilor Reynolds, I saw your hand.
Will the, the capital improvement plan? Can you just say a little bit? Last, last line there was you'd be seeing a recommendation that we, combined sewer overflow Long Term Control Plan targeted. What are the elements, I guess, that she is, capital improvement? Can you just talk about, you're sitting there.
Well, I think what I'm saying is that that's something that would need to be considered, you know. If we, that's going to be in the decision matrix because in the ideal world, it would be great to have a separated system before we went to secondary treatment. Whether we start doing some shedding the flow off, you know, it really, it's, this is what I talked about in the beginning when I said, the treatment plant is not a standalone issue. You know, what you do with the treatment plant affects the collection system. What you do on the collection system affects the treatment plant. So what we're saying in the capital plan is, yeah, we're going forward on those separations because we know those are important. We know those help and we know there's a because we know those are important, we know those help, and we know there's a great benefit to those. So that, that we're planning on going forward on.
Combine sewer, once we. Yeah.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
And the only other point I'd say is that, you know, we would recommend that concurrently, we go forward with this 201 facilities update and we start those planning steps because, as I said, that's not a short, that's not a quick process to make, you know, to get the information so that we can make wise decisions on this. So, you know, I think what we would recommend is that we would go forward with that 201 facilities update and begin doing some of that planning.
Uh, Councilor Whitehouse.
You know, we're talking serious money here, $35 million to $50 million. Now, I'd like to go back to page 24, where you talked about securing funding to build this new secondary system. I know, I'm wrong. Can you go into a little more detail? Where and how, where is the money available?
Let me, let me speak to that, counselor, because I think it really is an issue that will be part of our action plan that we're going to bring back to you. One of the things that we can't answer today is, is there money available that we can get from, as a result of putting off our plant, our secondary treatment? Is there funds available that we might be able to work with our congressional delegation on to try to supplement some of these costs? And we'll also have to take a look at the 30% funding that's available now under the law. So we need to look at all that. We need to make, so part of our action plan may include something, meetings with congressional delegation and/or letters from the city council to congressional delegation outlining some of our concerns and our needs, and then establishing maybe a meeting with our congressional delegation relative to this issue. That would be one thing. The second thing would be to say, assuming that we would get, let's say that we do not have federal, additional federal money, we would then probably put together an option showing where we get 30% funding, and we can run those numbers and then show you what then would come from the ratepayer. And those would be something we could put together as part of our action plan.
Another question, Mr. Mayor. So what you're saying to me, Mr. City Manager, that we will not be probably taxing the developer, the, the, the changes that are taking place throughout the city that impacts, right now, our sewer treatment plant?
No, that's not what I said. Now, what I will respond to you on that specific question is that, as the deputy public works director indicated, we have a rate study that's coming forward. As I indicated to you in the last two meetings, at that rate study and during that time, we'll talk about impact fees. Because as you recall, impact fees need to be consistent and uniform. You cannot pick on a particular developer just because you need to have a plan in place, you need to have regulations in place, you need to have some ability to charge that impact fee, do it based on certain types of requirements. And I would refer to the city attorney relative to how impact fees are levied.
We have, excuse me, we have impact fee legislation in place. And an establishment of an impact fee is a function of the planning board, the planning board review process. They determine whatever they think are appropriate impacts based upon criteria listed in.
And what we will do, and just to follow up, is in our rate study, which we have been working on, we will then make, as an addendum to that rate study, some recommendations as we would look at impacts on water and sewer, not only wastewater, but water as well.
Any delay, one more question, Mr. Mayor. Any delay whatsoever, once the building permit, once the land regulatory boards approve of a project, our hands are tied. We have no option to impact our regulator impact fee. And I think that we should be moving very swiftly within the next 30 days to put something together. Because I'm referring to design, study, that type of money is being spent by the ones who are impacting this problem, the developers, and what's taking place in my city. It is a serious, serious problem, in my opinion.
And I don't disagree with you, but I think you need to be uniform for that. And that's something that the planning board needs to take up.
I apologize if maybe this was mentioned. What's the timeline on the rate study in terms of when that would be?
We would, again, have to schedule that in. I think we've scheduled that in probably for March. That's, we have additional meetings, but we probably would schedule that in for a March review.
For us to be briefed in March?
Yeah.
Is the rate study done?
No, it's in the process. There's a draft, but again, it's being vetted right now, and we would like to, again, do it in this type of environment that, so that you have a full opportunity to be educated on it and to be able to make those decisions.
And Councilor.
Mayor, just let the record show that I was very concerned, and my opinions were expressed. Moving very swiftly on this issue.
And that'll be noted. Councilor Dwyer and then Councilor Panalakis.
Since you face a basic, why lack of separation, that's the challenge in the future, is the real, for the pollution, apart from money? What are the other factors?
For the, for the separation or for going to?
For separation. I mean, why, why the 10 to 15, other than the cost, you understand the cost, but are there other factors?
We've actually found that, that over the last, you know, seven or eight years, when we've started going gangbusters on these projects, that there is only so much that you can physically do in this city. I mean, you know, it's, when we start tearing up streets, there's not only the cost of the project itself, but there's just the oversight, and there's the traffic issues, the disruption. And, you know, we've really found that we're kind of, we've developed a comfort level in this, is a couple of million dollars per year, but you start getting more than that, and it can run out of control. And obviously, on projects like this, this is, this is 100-year infrastructure, you know, we're putting this in and we want to make sure it's done right, and, you know, we get what we pay for, and we don't have future problems with this. So it's almost the order of magnitude. I mean, you could blow up the whole between Middle and South Street and do that all in one big project, but it would kill me.
And just following on that, counselor.
That is, that's pretty significant, by the way, just for the record, that would be, yeah.
Not only do we have the sewer separation projects, but we have our other infrastructure projects going.
Absolutely.
So what we try to do is, we get together annually, and we try to determine during the summer months, what projects we want to move forward on. And next summer, we're going to have three or four that are going to significantly impact the downtown. And we are pushing on that because there is Lower Court Street that people are interested in, there are a number of other projects. So we have to, we have to be careful that we don't tie up those streets that will affect our central business district.
Right. And, and as John mentioned, we do have the other utilities. I mean, when we're going in there, we have meetings each year with the gas company and the other utilities because as we're getting in there, again, this street's done, and we don't want to see people in there in near future. So it's getting, making sure we have the money to replace water lines at the same time, sidewalks, streets.
Councilor Panalakis?
I just was interested, John, in how the city council can work on the next step and get it started.
But what we, what we'd like to do, counselor, is we'd like to have, like I said, 30 to 60 days. What we'd like to do is have an action plan laid out for you, and we'll come back to you at a council meeting, a regular council meeting. If we feel it's appropriate, we will, let's say, as part of pre-meeting, like a work session prior to a regular city council meeting, we will do a similar type presentation, and we would outline our action plan relative to the issue. And part of the action plan, as I indicated, may include such things as dealing with congressional delegation, dealing with EPA, as Councilor Whitehouse said, maybe impact fee issues that might be associated as a percentage of what could be derived from it and received from there. Then we would ask the city council to endorse that action plan, just like we did when we did the 201 study back in 1998. I think for those that were on the city council, there were certain things that the city council wanted to see happen. We developed a 201 study outline, and we proceeded. And as we went along, there were benchmarks that we achieved, and it was a perfect case of being able to watch the outcomes that we had from those. Because obviously, we see the results of the lack of flooding, the ability to be able to separate more and less pollution in our self-pollination, along with lowering the amount of flow into our facility. So that's the same type of thing. So once we start with that action plan, and it's approved by the city council, we'll do the same thing we did starting in 1998. We will continue, and I meet with the sewer and water department on a regular basis, monthly, and we go through all the action items, we see what our status is, and we continue to try to move forward. Part of that, we also look at the other infrastructure projects in the city as well.
We, we have seen a savings, though, since we separated a lot of that, that were not taken to the turnkey because of the water being out.
Not so much turnkey is, you know, what we're bringing up to turnkey is the, I mean, that, we have seen our wastewater crew has improved the whole process over there. They've done, we've got some great staff over there, and they're, they're really, you know, digging into the science and putting together measurable information that they're able to really tweak the system, so it's really optimized right now. So we're seeing improvements because of that. Savings of cost, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing electrical costs go up, we're seeing chemical costs go up. So, you know, I think if you probably went back on some benchmark level, you could see that. But, you know, we're, right now, we're fighting the high costs of just operations.
But I, I understand that, the operation and everything, but we did see somewhat of savings when we did start to separate. We weren't taking water out of them, so much stormwater out.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we're definitely, we're sending much less water over to the treatment plant, so we are seeing savings in that respect, yes.
Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Do we accept wastewater from any sources outside of the city?
Newcastle.
From Newcastle?
We have, we get, we receive wastewater from Newcastle, and then we have the Exit 3 truck stop in Greenland, and there is the trailer park on Lafayette Road.
And from, and are we also, as part of these studies, looking at water separation cases, any seepages in those areas as well?
Oh, yeah, well, in the case, we are, we're actually, we have a project going on right now, looking at that end of Lafayette Road. It's looking at that pump station and, as you mentioned, the infiltration that we're getting into that, that system. So, yeah, we're, we're not just focused on this area. I mean, our projects are over the entire system.
And if any cost that would come into this, if we had to do something like that, would be partnership with Newcastle and helping to get monies and so forth, if that was to be.
Our agreement with Newcastle requires that they contribute to upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. So anything we do out there, they will be a party to financially, yes.
And also, I'm looking forward to seeing the impact fees, I think, that's something that we could, I'm glad that discussion is.
It sounds like roughly that the timeline on, say, a 30 to 60-day set of options, action plan coincides roughly, or potentially roughly, with the rate study.
Yeah, we may want to, maybe it would be useful to maybe aim for that date. I think that's a March 6 date, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have the schedule, but that I think is when the council would be meeting on a regular session in March. So maybe we'll aim for that timeframe and see what we can come up with. But we, at the very least, would want to do the, the actual rate study at that time. So, yes, there is a city council meeting on Monday, March 6, and we'll probably, as under the new rules and order, be able to come in at 6:30, have our work session, probably start talking about the rate study. That might become, that might go a little bit longer, and if it does, we'll have to deal with that. We'd like to aim, maybe we can aim for the March 6 date. That would give us at least a finable time to try to get our options.
Uh, pardon me, Assistant Mayor Coraney. Okay, noted. Appreciate that. I just would like to comment, there've been a lot of good suggestions here, and we have a much better sense, I think, before us as to what we're dealing with. I would like to say that Public Works, like many other city departments, always seems to present with well-articulated goals and objectives about what it is we're trying to do as a city and what they're trying to do particularly. Public Works has an excellent track record of maintaining and constructing quality infrastructure for our city. And what we saw this evening from the separated sewer to what is being proposed and considered is a good example of the longstanding efforts that they have undertaken from their award-winning staff and to the results that we see, in particular, in the separated sewer system, and that we're looking forward at rate model studies so that they're constantly cognizant of what the taxpayer impact of what it is that they are doing. I have seen this from Public Works in this presentation and many other presentations in the past two years, including budget presentations. They always seem to focus on what needs to be done for the city as opposed to just asking for money. And so I do appreciate the presentation this evening. What we have going forward seems like a great opportunity for the city to consider these significant issues, and I'm sure we'll try to come to the best decision we can.
Before we end, Mr. Mayor, I do have a folder here filled with the letters that were sent to me, here with some of my fellow counselors, have clippings from news releases. The latest is a publication that was given to me from the Conservation Law Foundation, which is a New England publication, and they mentioned Boston, New Hampshire, and the wastewater treatment plant, and how serious it is. And I just am very concerned, and I think this should be top priority before anything else in reference to what we'll be doing, what our city manager is posing for the future. I think it should be put on hold, and we should emphasize this as a priority.
Well, good point, Counselor. One thing I would note is, as the first gathering of this new council since the inauguration earlier this week, I think one of the reasons for it are the real policy implications. And a small part of, that's the major part of it, but a small part of it also is to try to signify to the public that this is a top priority, that the ramifications for this, financially, environmentally, everything down, economic development, it, it's, it affects virtually every decision that we make. And like a few folks have said tonight, we're talking about 50- to 100-year ramifications. So the placement of this as the first time that we gather, really, in terms of talking about policy, it's a coincidence. It's because it's that important. So your comments, I think, are shared by everybody around the table. Counselor Reynolds, and then Counselor Dwyer, and then Counselor Panalakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I guess, following up on that, a couple of slides. Only, it was bad news scenario. Specifically, the, informing us that Echo River was listed on the 303D list, the Water Act reference, of dirt waterways, ever citing the balloons of mercury piece of these dioxide. However, Pierce Island is not a source, Iran River monitoring. No, just. I'm, I'm, no word on the primary. You just. I suppose. I, I. Gives me a little kind of. On a train. As well. Why would they do that?
I don't understand their motives, and I don't know, I've never seen any information from them that provided any sort of science that was basis of their decisions. I know, you know, what we do is we hire scientists and we take a look at these things, and we try to, we try to base it on engineering and scientific judgment. So I really can't respond to that because I've never seen any information from them that says contrary to what we're saying. They've said it, but they haven't, I've never seen any information.
River monitor.
Sure, oh, sure.
Can you give us a reference to the other people?
I mean, we can make it available at, you know, we have it down at Public Works, and we can have a copy up at City Hall or bring it to, put one in the library or something. It's, certainly, any of, any of these studies that are listed in here, free to come down to. to Public Works and we've got a library full of them, so.
The only problem is that they're rather voluminous and, but we will make them available in the library. It's the best place to get them.
Counselor Dwyer?
I don't disagree at all with the priority from an environmental view, which is why I asked the question, if it's possible to speed up the separation. So I appreciate your answer on that. It does seem to me it's important to separate the, the impact on the environment from the economy. And I, it feels like we've made some assumptions without asking the question. Apart from what we're supposed to do as a water event, where are we?
On our, at our treatment plant?
With our current treatment.
Yeah. In, in dry flows, we're seeing in the summer, midsummer, where you're really getting the, the true sanitary flow going there, it may go down as low as three-point-five million gallons per day. Is that, is that right, Paul, three-point-five? And it's designed for four-point-eight. When we get the big rainstorm, you know, it's maxed out and we're, we're overflowing, so.
But apart from any separation, terms of usage, the development, how do we think about what our population is now?
Right. What, what we did, when, when Underwood Engineers did the two-on-one facilities plan, they actually, they took a look at our current zoning and they, they assumed a certain percentage of build-out, a max build-out. And all of our plans are based on those, those max types of build-out. So that is figured into, when you do these studies, you, even though it's an empty piece of property, you assume that there's going to be, what is the zoning going to allow? And you assign that flow typical with that type of development.
So that four-point-five move build-out of?
Yeah.
That, that like earlier, you said one of the projects coming up is worth, how many quarter, very, that you know, a lot of water?
Yes.
In from swamp, sending it created at our, that's that project. Eliminate.
Immediate. Correct, immediate benefit, yeah.
So we're going to, going to increase our cushion.
Right. And we've seen that, I mean, we, 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 right, we've seen that as, as we've gone forward with these projects. We've seen the immediate benefit. You know, as, as Peter said, when we did Baxter Fell's area, you know, as they were going through and doing that separation work, there was actually a pipe tied into a swamp that was going into our sewer system. And we saw immediate benefit. As soon as we got that out, separated that system, you know, magically, people on that road, they're, they're, they weren't getting the backups in the rainstorm. And that, that area traditionally had numerous backups and they weren't getting the flooded basements. And we, we saw the benefit immediately, so.
Counselor Penalakos?
Yes, I, I just want to say that I think that, that for the past eight years that the city manager and the staff have worked very hard to correct a system that was never touched in over twenty-five years, maybe thirty-five years. And I think this is, I want to see this go ahead, but I want to see it done right. I do not want to see it rushed. And, and we have to rely on our staff. They do a lot of work and they would not lie to us about our capacity. So I don't think the fact of the development or anything else should play into this, that we should try to look at what we need in the future and do it the proper way.
Counselor Reynolds, you may, when you ask a question, you might, because the microphone is here.
Oh, I see.
You know, you're talking out that way. So you might leave that, you could probably put on.
Any other hands? Counselor Reynolds, did you have another question or were you just? What's that? This is a dangerous job. If, if not, Counselor, did you have another comment or question? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anybody else around the table?
Just, Your Honor, just want to advise everybody that the next regular meeting of the city council will be January twenty-third. The agenda, I'm asking, I shouldn't be able to put out on Friday because it's a short week. We will have a substantial agenda, so we'll put out on Friday rather than Thursday. And we anticipate on the twenty-third to have a presentation similar to this on our Madbury Water Treatment Plant.
And that will begin at six-thirty?
Correct.
And that will be televised in a similar format?
Correct. And prior to that, there will be a proposed non-public meeting regarding negotiation.
At six o'clock?
Yes, yes.
With that, appreciate the information. Very helpful. Appreciate those that came out as well. Appreciate, once again, the attendance of a good portion of our legislative delegation. Appreciate the work they do and coming out this evening after working all day in Concord. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.